We have joined the pledge of allegiance, the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with the righteous justice of our law.
Retire the colors!
Thank you. Councilor Paul, City Clerk, would you please take your oath?
Mayor Protem Sastaric.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera Papua.
Here.
Councilmember McCalmick.
Here.
Councilmember Masalada.
Here.
We have a corner.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, to approve the absence of Mayor Moore?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's waiting. Nothing. Are we, we approved? Okay. Uh, City, uh, City Manager Ingram will not be in attendance tonight's City Council meeting due to an automobile accident she was involved in yesterday. Assistant City Manager Gallegos will act in her capacity until her return. Thank you, Patrick. Um, approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolution ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item? No? Okay. Um, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we received three communications regarding various agenda items that were distributed to council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, could I get a motion, uh, to approve the, um, agenda as printed?
I'll move. Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to presentations. Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Uh, we have, uh, Young Marine Sergeant Major Megan Lynch, National Young Marine of the Year, to accept the parliament proclamation. Thank you.
All right, hi, good evening. As said, I am Young Marine Sergeant Major Megan Lynch. I am currently serving as the 2018, 2020 National Young Marine of the Year. Uh, so my term ends this upcoming May, where the next National Army will take my place. Uh, but for this year, I get to travel, I get to speak, I get to, basically my job description is to inspire and motivate. Uh, so I just want to thank the City Council members for granting Southeast County Young Marines, my, uh, home unit, the opportunity to receive a Red Ribbon Week proclamation. The Young Marines Program is a national nonprofit youth organization for boys and girls ages eight to the completion of high school. We teach character building through self-discipline, teamwork, and leadership. The primary focus of the Young Marine Program is promoting a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. One way we do this is through Red Ribbon Week. The origin of Red Ribbon Week began in the 1980s and is the United States Initiative for the education and prevention of drugs, tobacco, and alcohol abuse. During the week between October 23rd and the 31st each year, elementary schools, junior high schools, high schools, community groups, and young marines focused their attention on the celebration of a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. Red Ribbon Week began as a way to honor the memory of U.S. Marine Corps veteran and DEA Agent Enrique "Kiki" Camarena. Over four years, he had been in Guadalajara, Mexico, working undercover. Those efforts led to the discovery of a multimillion-dollar narcotic manufacturing operation in Mexico. His efforts not only led to the eradication of this and other drug production facilities by the authorities, but also greatly anchored several drug cartel leaders. In 1985, Kiki Camarena was kidnapped, tortured, and sadly murdered. Red Ribbon Week is a very important time of year for both Southeast County and the National Young Marines Program. There is approximately 9,000 members around the country to reach out to their communities year-round with a "Say No to Drugs" message, and these proclamations support our war on drugs. It is an honor to be here. Thank you so much for having myself and my unit, Southeast County Young Marines. Thank you again for this opportunity and for your support on this very serious issue. I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Here we go. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Is it okay if we get a picture with you all? Sure, sure. Over here, we're taking pictures, come on. Where do you want us, you want us in front or? Yep, be on, be on the other side, be on the other side. There you go. That's good, there we go. Squeeze it, squeeze it, squeeze it.
These parents.
That's so great. Oh, thank you. Okay, now it's time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council and not to any individual member of staff or the audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Elaine Lane, my last name is L.A.Y., Annie. I'm a long-term, uh, resident on Corsair Way in Bridgeport. I'm here tonight representing the Women's Club of Seal Beach. We're small, but we're really a mighty group. We only have 60 members, but at our last meeting, we were able to disburse $17,000 to the community, to charitable organizations, um, to the schools, and to, um, people in need that are represented through these organizations. But I'm here tonight because one of our other goals, in addition to fundraising, is education. And we're reaching out this year, putting together a very special awareness program on, on plastic pollution. The plastic pollution seems to be more of an issue after we have a very rainy season, and it flows down the San Gabriel River, onto the beach, and then out to the ocean. So we just wanted to call a little more awareness. Uh, right now, we're doing a pretty good job of cleaning up. I know there are groups in town that clean up after all this happens. Uh, but we need more helpers, and we'd also maybe try to prevent all this trash from coming down the river. Um, on Saturday, November 16th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Mary Wilson Library, um, we are hosting Algalita, A-L-G-A-L-I-T-A. It's a marine research organization. They have a boat in Alameda's Bay, and what they do is they go out to the Pacific Geyer. And the Pacific Geyer is a very fancy word for a trash dump that's out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean between Hawaii and California. And there are different estimates. Sometimes I hear that the trash is as wide as this, half the state of Texas, and then other times I hear it's the same size as the state of Texas. So I don't know, but we'll hear more about it on November 16th at 2:00. I'm here to invite all of the council members to please be our guests. Bring your grandson, your granddaughter, uh, maybe Leo Lyon, uh, somebody who might be interested in learning more about this particular topic. We're also going to have Pia Hirsch, who's a longtime resident of Seal Beach. She's a teenager on the youth board of Algalita, and her interest is, um, in pollution. She's had articles written about, um, about her in particular, uh, in the LA Times. So she's a very dynamic young teenager and cares a lot about Seal Beach, and she'll be there with us that day. So, uh, please mark your calendars, we'd love to see you there. Um, I left flyers with the clerks, so, um, feel free to take one or have it, I don't know how it all works, whether she'll pass them out or whether you pick one up. But, uh, oh, very good. Alrighty, thank you all so much, I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. Um, city manager isn't here, but I want to talk about her transparency regarding, uh, in 2014, when she used taxpayers' money, uh, to have a, a political gain for herself using flyers. Well, Harvard Jarvis has taken that to court, and you can't use taxpayers' money for political gain. It went all the way to the California Supreme Court. And the pensions, how many times have I asked for Joe Nation to come down here and explain the pension problems that this city has, and I think all small cities have? Now, Assembly Bill 68, how long is it going to take you to get that down here and passed? Assembly Bill 68, which now gives everyone in town ability to build on their lot for two units. And you're, have, I think you have to have it done within a certain time limit. I, I've been reading it, 'cause it's a couple pages. But, um, you're gonna have to change the way you treat people that have units in this town, because the end of single-family zoning in California has come to an end with Assembly Bill 68. And, so every time that a new bill comes down, it takes you so long to get it down here, to get it done, and get it back, to get it passed. And you will usually wait until the last day. So I would like to see that done before the last day, because I know that you've been, I know of exactly one person with a lot and a half and a little house that said they couldn't build over the garage. Well, that's the end of that. And I think that, um, the other thing that I want to talk about is my request for, my fourth request from the city attorney, from you people, about, uh, the, the city manager, Jill Ingram, requested a threat assessment. Now, I want it. I want that because the Freedom of Information, attorneys down in San Diego have won a big lawsuit, and the attorneys up here in Orange County against the sheriffs has won a big lawsuit. I don't think you can withhold that much longer. I've asked for it four times now. I want it. Do I have to go to somebody and start a lawsuit against you there, having to pay the Freedom of Information Act almost $100,000? And they lost. And the other people up here lost too. So, and I asked for some, one more that I have not received, about the food. Remember a couple years ago, I got all of the food that was being eaten by the city council, and half of it came from Long Beach? Well, everybody was saying, eat, uh, eat on, eat downtown on Main Street. And the other thing now, it's really bothering me, is taking the in-lu parking fees for that bus to come every Thir- every Thursday down here. How many people were on that bus this Thursday that came down here, had a pocket full of money to spend? You're gonna have to take that money and put it back in the in-lu parking fees and take some money from the sales tax. The in-lu parking fees came up at 207 Main Street, and when the Coast Commission found out about that, they were not happy.
30 seconds to wrap up?
They were not happy. The, the people on Main Street were having to pay in-lu parking fees and had no place, no, you had no new parking structure built. You can't go on just the structures you have now, you have to come up with a new one, and that money should be returned to those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for oral communications? Going, going, okay, I'm gonna close oral communications then. We'll move on to the city attorney report. Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report?
Uh, I do, thank you Mayor Protem. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session. Uh, four members of the council were present. Mayor Moore was absent due to illness. Uh, the council met regarding the three items on the posted agenda. With regard to items A and B, the council took no reportable action. With regard to item C, which was the item relating to a claim, liability claim from Decor, uh, the city council unanimously ratified a settlement of that claim, um, for $45,000, and directed staff to continue to pursue the issue with the city's insurance authority.
Okay, Assistant City Manager Gallegos, do you have anything to report?
Uh, nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Uh, council comments, uh, council person, Masalava, do you have a report?
I attended, um, the sanitation, the Orange County Sanitation District Annual Meeting, uh, State of the District Meeting, last Friday morning. Um, it was informative, and they fed us breakfast, and it was very nice. Um, and I can't nag you about mosquitoes now, because there wasn't a meeting this, this month at all, but I do know that they did discover more West Nile virus mosquitoes flying around, and that there were three or four people that are newly infected. So I, I do believe it's 15 people in the county this season that have been affected by West Nile virus, and I assure you, the majority of those will never have the same life that they had before they got bit. So please be careful. When it's warm weather, the mosquitoes are out, and pay attention to your environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Vera Papua, would you?
I don't really need to report, but I just want to remind everyone that Thursday is Halloween. Uh, there will be a lot of kids and, I'm sure, parents on the streets, so please be careful, be watchful, and enjoy the evening. I know we'll have a lot of trick-or-treaters my part of the neighborhood, but it's a great night, and just want everybody to be safe out there. Thank you.
Councilman Calmick, do you have a report?
Thank you. With regard to, uh, what Elaine had to say about the, uh, Algalita presentation that's going to be made, there's no question that, uh, that plastic is one of the biggest enemies that we have. So I would encourage people to, uh, try and make that event. Uh, I had the opportunity to be involved in two very important meetings last week. One was concerning the sand replenishment for Surfside, which is long, long overdue. And I have to say, um, time will tell, and not too much time hopefully, whether, um, our latest effort is going to be successful, but, uh, this is one of the first times where we have, um, the complete support of all of our local elected officials, from Michelle Steele's office all the way up to Congressman Ruda's office. And, um, we had, uh, their staff representatives, and the support that they are, have already started, um, to give us is very, very encouraging, and I want to thank Lauren, who represents, uh, Congressman Ruda's office, and, uh, the other staff from the other elected officials, that, you know, this, this may be an opportunity to get the needle to move more, and to establish a longer-term plan, so that, uh, we don't have to worry whether, you know, our neighbor to the south of us is gonna wash away. You know, one of the things that we've brought up is we've now included the city of Huntington Beach and the city of Newport Beach as well, because, uh, Surfside is what is known as a feeder beach, so that the sand that is sitting on Surfside's beach, which is eroding at the rate of 375,000 cubic yards every year, um, is critically low, and so what happens is, if there's no sand on Surfside's beach, it doesn't propagate down to Huntington and Newport. So we also now have the support of the Public Works Departments of both Huntington Beach and Newport, in terms of applying the political pressure that is the solution to getting this. The Army Corps of Engineers, who, uh, after they built the jetties, um, at the beginning of World War II, they, they ruined the flow of sand on our beaches, and they acknowledged that and said, "Okay, we will, um, we will replenish that sand, um, when it's needed, on a regular cycle." And they, they did 12 replenishments, and it came time for stage 13, and they said, "Well, we're ready to go, and we're happy to do it, but we're not funding it, we don't have the money." So, this is a very, very critical item, and as I said, um, I felt very good about the, the meeting that we had, and the fact that we've already seen some correspondence coming from, um, Supervisor Steele's office and from Congressman Ruda, who is on the Appropriations Committee.
Uh, no, he's not on the Appropriations Committee, he's on the Environment.
Okay. And the other meeting that I attended, which is also dear to all of us, is the San Gabriel River. Um, as you may know, we are the recipient of every piece of trash and litter that comes down the San Gabriel River. It ends up on our beach. And, um, the problem historically has been that, um, you, it, it's trying to corral a bunch of kittens. There are 43 cities and two counties that have jurisdiction, and to get all of these entities together to do something is, has been proven to be problematic. Well, we had, uh, we now have the same support from our legislators on this issue, and, uh, we're gonna push further ahead with that, and, um, at, at least, we've, we've sort of come to the conclusion that, you know, we have to apply political pressure. And, uh, even though that this, there's a state mandate that, uh, all of the cities along the river will put, um, catch basins, which are kind of baskets, for want of a better word, that go inside the storm drains, that will capture the trash before it's exhausted into the storm drain and then into the river. And, um, in the case of Seal Beach, we're about 55%, I believe, completed, doing our part, and we're, um, looking for another grant soon to complete that, but it's to get those other 43 cities on board to want to do that. So, um, again, we're, we're not gonna let go of this.
Sorry, just also to clarify, he's also in the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, which I think is the one you were thinking of.
Thank you. So, that's about all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this, in the last couple weeks, I did attend the Maga Carnival, and it looked like it was, uh, very successful this, uh, this year, a lot of fun, uh, being had out there. Uh, I attended a, in, um, ACCOC Lunch and Learn on Social Media, which was also, uh, very informative, the, uh, legal and governmental kind of aspects to that. Uh, I also attended the Sanitation Breakfast, and I attended a, um, a Vote Center meeting put on by the Red Star Voters, along with our city clerk and our deputy city clerk, thank you. And, uh, there was even, the Secretary of State was even there, so it was a very informative meeting, you know, giving us some updates on, on the changes coming before us. They told us they're still working on, uh, identifying the, the locations of the vote centers, and, uh, they should have those by December. So, that's about it for tonight. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members. Okay, tonight, we had no items removed, so can I get a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to, let's see, we have no items removed, we have no public hearings, we have no continued or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, item K, introduction of an ordinance of the City of Seal Beach City Council, amending the City of Seal Beach Municipal Code by modifying Title IX, Chapter 9.60 Building Code. Is there a staff report?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem Sastaric, uh, Executive Community Development Director, Steve Haller will present.
Thank you Assistant City Manager Gallegos, Mayor Protem, Sastaric, and fellow council members. This evening, we have before you, um, our, every three years, we come up with the, or the state comes up with a new building code. The last time we had it was in 2016. Um, it comes out every July 1st, and then they typically do some amendments, and then they produce it in September, and then we have it, uh, adopted by the following year. This evening, I'd like to have our building official, Isla Jefferson, come up and talk about the, um, the changes to the code.
Okay.
Good evening, Madame Protem, Mayor Protem, and council members, staff, and residents. Uh, this year, there are not major changes, but very friendly changes to small business owners and single-family homeowners. Uh, the code is less restrictive while maintaining the fire, life, and safety. However, on the energy side and on the sustainability side, there are more, uh, requirements. Our windows is gonna be more efficient. Multifamily dwellings built newly will have solars on them. Uh, the existing homes and existing businesses are not impacted that much about the changes. Uh, the biggest changes for the existing homes in Seal Beach this year, with the help of our- our fire officials, we were able to simplify fire sprinkler requirements. It's flat now 750 square foot addition, or if the addition and alteration exceeds 50% of the home, then fire sprinkler required. There were a lot of, a couple other items I even had difficulty to understand. So it's more friendly code we have. And the last code cycle, we were able to separate the administration of the code, so we didn't do any changes at all to the administration of the codes. I'm happy to answer if you have any other questions.
I had a quick question. The fire sprinkler code, that was a mandate from Sacramento, is that correct, or is that city code?
I don't know the historical background, however, the fire sprinkler requirement came to the state code, I believe, six years ago?
2011.
2011. But before it came to the state code, City of Seal Beach had fire sprinkler ordinance for additions of 750 square foot or a certain percentage, and that within a three-year period, if you were doing alteration, it was still required. So we are lessening the fire sprinkler requirement this year.
You're lessening to what?
To compare to the Seal Beach Municipal Code whilst the state's still, it's only requiring when it's newly built. The alteration or addition, it doesn't require fire sprinkler per the state code.
Is there a certain water pressure you need for that?
Yes, you do.
And is every house obtainable to get that water pressure?
That question that I'm not going to be able to answer, probably the water person who is in charge of the water need to answer that question.
Because the reason I ask is my neighbor recently rebuilt their home, and they live on a hill, and when they tested the sprinklers, there wasn't enough pressure for the sprinklers to work because he didn't have enough pressure. And there was an additional cost to put all this stuff in, and I don't want to say it didn't work, but it wasn't very effective, and it cost him or and her a lot more money than anticipated, so.
It depends where you're located.
But the ordinance is, doesn't, it doesn't depend on where you're located?
No, not the ordinance. The technical requirements of the fire code, actually, the fire officials may explain better the relationship between the fire flow and the fire sprinkler requirement, if you want.
That's all right.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions?
Nope.
No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there no further discussion? We'll, we'll vote, this is the first, this is to approve the first reading?
First reading.
First reading, okay. Let's see if we have a vote.
I'll make a motion that we adopt.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll, those in, well, we've got to move, okay.
And we'll just note also, as part of that motion, if you could, that we're setting a public hearing prior to the second reading of the ordinance.
There will be, that's not on here, there will be a public hearing as part of the second reading of this, and that's November 12th, I believe.
Yes.
So this will be heard again with a public hearing at that time. Okay, so, oh, we've got, do you have, everybody have a vote? Okay. Vote, please. Oh, no, I don't need to do that. Okay. I'm getting confused. Okay, did we get that? Okay, great, thank you. That passes for zero.
And we just need to read that title. It's Ordinance Number 1681, An Ordinance of the City of Seal Beach City Council, Amending the City of Seal Beach Municipal Code by Modifying Title IX, Chapter 9.60 Building Code Thereof and Adopting by Reference the 2019 California Building Code, 2019 California Residential Code, 2019 California Electrical Code, 2019 California Mechanical Code, 2019 California Plumbing Code, 2019 California Fire Code, and 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, with certain amendments, additions, and deletions thereto.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Dr. Anthony Satello. Dr. Satello had a passion for medicine that never wavered. No subject held his attention like medicine. General practice was the best place for him. He was practicing at the right time, before there were paramedics or urgent cares or electronic records or all those encumbrances that modern physicians now have to contend with. Dr. Satello graduated from the California College of Medicine, Los Angeles, University of California, Irvine, on June 7th, 1962. He interned at the Los Angeles County General Hospital, July 1st, 1962 to July 1st, 1963. He started a private practice in Seal Beach on March 1st, 1972. He and a partner built out the reception room, front office, bathroom, and two rooms for exams, pediatric and general. Office calls were $5, and he took Medicare and Medicare insurance. He loved to barter, trade, exchange. Life was fun, and he never wanted his practice to end. In the end, Dr. Satello worked almost every day until the day he passed. He was 90 years old. It was his life. It was his passion. It was his calling, and he left behind a legacy entrenched by his work in the community with his patients and his friends. Everyone was his friend, and many became his best. On behalf of the City of Seal Beach, I send our condolences to his family and friends. And I believe Councilmember Cowick maybe had some comments?
Well, only that Dr. Satello was, was an amazing guy. We saw him for a visit probably a couple of weeks before he passed, and, you know, he was slowing down, but the minute that my wife brought up a question, a medical question concerning her health, I mean, he was like on it, you know, asking the right questions and came up with the diagnosis. And, you know, I'm here to say that both my wife and I are here today because of early diagnosis on his part, and he was a, he was a good human being as well.
Anybody else? Comments? No? Okay. Then we'll adjourn the city council meeting in memory of Dr. Anthony J. Satello to Tuesday, Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. to meeting closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you for coming.